Hi. We have Julie Katie, because Russ, you don't have any odd.
That's all.
Okay. So Julie Katie's on, myself, Jim Conway, Lance Reynolds from the Republican American, Jennifer Heaton-Jones, Margaret Minor, Kim Pacripka, Lumari from Voices, and you, Russ. Okay? Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Julie, thanks for setting this up again. So we have the minutes of our meeting of June 2nd. I need a motion to approve those.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion or anything?
No, they look good.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Tax Collector's Report, Kim's on. Did you want to say anything, Kim? You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, Kim's gonna have to mute herself. It's not allowing me.
Kim, can you, if you hit your mic, let me see. Here, let me see if I can. No. Oh geez, where am I? Here I am. Anyway, there were no rebates or anything. I know that they've been pretty busy in that office with, you know, the taxes that are coming in through the mail or in the drop box.
Oh, I gotta do my taxes.
So I have to, you know, hopefully it'll continue all month. Because people were asked to pay online, and online, which I don't know how many of the people have done that, but. Kim, you can, can you unmute yourself? No. And Julie, you can't. Okay.
No, I've sent a request or asking her to.
No comment.
I had to right-click and work from the menu and go in and out to get off mute.
Right. Up in the corner of your picture, there's a little blue box, and if you hit that, it usually says unmute.
Good.
Okay. Well, if she comes in a little later, we'll go for that. So communications with the public? Margaret, do you have anything?
No. I'm just, just here to listen, learn, learn and listen, listen and learn.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. So we just have some appointments, and then we'll get to you, Jennifer, okay? So the Roxbury Museum Board of Trustees. Julie, did we connect with Jean?
I left a message, and she never got back to me.
Yeah. That's the second time. All right. Well, I'll make a motion that we table the museum board of trustees. We have somebody that I think will work out and would be interested. We're just having a hard time connecting. So I make a motion to table that.
A little second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. ZBA alternate, the vacancy was left by Judith Kelly as a regular member, and then we bumped up Doug into that position, which left his position vacant. So there's an alternate position available. I know Nanette was trying to find someone. I don't know if she has, so we would have to table that one also. I'll make a motion to table the ZBA alternate position vacancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the town police officers. You know, these are, I mean, these are hired people, and, but they, we give them terms also. And so AC 95 is for, his term is up, and it's Bill Carrio. So if we could get a motion to reappoint Bill Carrio?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Bill Carrio for a four-year term, August 1st, 2020, to July 31st, 2024.
Russ, you're off again. You're mute, Russ. Okay. But so, okay. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, there you are.
They knocked me out.
Oh, okay.
Maybe on purpose.
I have AC 88 here, and that would be Jason D'Souza, who filled a position before, and that's for a four-year term. Need a motion to reappoint Jason.
I will make a motion to reappoint Jason D'Souza for a four-year term, August 6th, 2019, to July 31st, 2023.
Right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's from the 19th. That's when he was hired, but we never appointed him, which, like I said, I don't know why we have to make appointments when people are hires, but. Okay, Inland Wetlands alternate. This is a vacancy expiring August 31st, 2022. And this is from the resignation of Daniella Pappas. So Russ, I know you were thinking of some people. Where are you with that?
Olivia Cody has expressed a thing of interest, and I would like to have, we need to have more women on the board. Sue is all alone. So if Olivia has expressed an interest, but I think she should, I'll have her call you, Barbara, to talk to her. Or I'll just invite her to a meeting.
Yeah. She should go to your next meeting.
Yeah, she should come to our next meeting, and if she likes it, then I would recommend her, because she's a great kid. She really is.
Okay.
Does go to Central Connecticut, but she is home a lot, and she is willing to come home once a month to go to the meetings, if we ever go live again.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to table the Inland Wetlands alternate vacancy position.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, so I have two people, for the special constables, and these are two more positions at the Falls. These are two people that go to the Falls a lot and are incensed with the garbage that gets down there. So I have, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Meg Tinsley. It's RC 96, Special Constable, and it's just to have more eyes down at the Falls. A lot of ticketing.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the other person would be RC, so it's Roxbury Constable, 97, Special Constable, Paul Swanson.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like I said, we've been ticketing quite a bit, have all of our special constables working down there, as well as our own town police officers. And so money is coming in, but we moved the big portable sign that we have, the big orange sign, and it says town permit required, $90 fine. They just park right in front of it. So it's very frustrating. Okay, so I have invited Jennifer Heaton-Jones to come and speak with us tonight, because it's something that we should probably consider is moving over out of Mira to HRA. And what I am going to ask at the end of our little talk here tonight is that we are still in a contract with Mira. I have talked with the president, Tom Kirk, and what I am going to ask is that you allow me to write him a letter to, you know, break the contract, because we're in it till 2027. The problem is, is that most of the towns are not going to go and agree to paying that $145 tip fee, and the state is not stepping up to help fix the whole Mira plant over there. So there's a lot of unknowns, and regardless, if that doesn't get fixed, they're going to have to start building, you know, platforms for trains, et cetera. But we've talked about this before. So we're going to be able, when all of that works out, we're going to be shipping all of our trash out of state. How long is that going to last? Because I can't imagine Connecticut taking someone else's trash on a regular basis, and that's for all the Mira towns. We're a very small town, but it would be for all of them. So anyway.
Barbara, it's going to last a long time, because that's what it's become. Deep solid waste management plan is a shambles. They don't have a plan. I could tell you, all the contaminated soil that we ship, it goes out of state. We do have in-state recycling facilities, but that's where it's going. It's going in the states like Ohio and Pennsylvania. They want it, because they're making a lot of money on it. And landfills, you could say what you want. I manage four of them. Once they're closed, they're beautiful wildlife refuges, is what they become. But I don't agree with what we're doing, but our state has failed the people, because they don't have a good solid waste management plan. We need a plan in-state, but obviously state can't step up. It doesn't have the money. So I'm interested to hear Jennifer and see what our options are. Everything is priced, of course. I've talked to Winter Brothers, who runs the Danbury Transfer Station, where they put garbage on rail cars, and they ship all that out of state. I've gotten pricing from them, as you know. So we do have options. If we left Mira, do we get penalized? Is there a penalty?
There's not a penalty there, because in this contract, there was an opt-out price that we had an option of getting out, because they didn't keep the price with the cost of living, which is what they were supposed to be doing, and it's higher than that. So when that kicks in, it triggers that the town would have the ability to get out, and that it's for 30 days. You have that opportunity. Unfortunately, that was in March, when everything went crazy. And so I said, well, wait a minute. And it would take effect June 30th. So I mean, it just missed it. And so I'm gonna, I am, I'm going to go to the board and say, you gotta let us out of here, because otherwise, we would have to wait till next March to get out, because they're not upholding their end of the deal. So I'm just, like I said, I'm going to ask that you allow me to go to the board and say, let me out of there. And the other thing is, is that we're small potatoes. I mean, they're, they're not going to lose a lot by Roxbury stepping out.
No, but us stepping out sets a precedent, and they may not.
I know. That's the, that's the other.
It's not how big we are. Then everybody follows us.
But anyway, Jennifer, we keep cutting you off, not letting you speak. So let's, what would your proposal be for us? Let's start there.
Well, I can tell you what there are options. So for those of you who don't know who I am, I am the Executive Director of the Husatonic Resources Recovery Authority. We are currently now 12 municipalities in Western Connecticut. We just grew by a town for the first time since 1986, and the town of Weston just joined the authority, and mostly forced by their contract had recently ended, and they were looking at larger fees that they, as the contract ended, those fees were looking like they were unsustainable for the, for the town and the size of the town, just like Roxbury. Can I tell you that HRA would accept Roxbury? I would, all I can say as the Executive Director is, I'm sure they would be open to it, as they were open to Weston. They spoke of having other municipalities join the authority. They have concerns about being too large, so that my opinion is, if you are interested in joining the authority and writing a letter to the chairman, who is currently the first selectman of Bethel, Matt Knickerbocker, I would suggest that you do that sooner than later, given the current times with Mira and the capacity with the state. I, I would like to say, just kind of respond to Russ's comments, that Connecticut DEP, they do have a solid waste management plan. It's, the problem with the current plan is, it has very little enforcement, has very little teeth behind it, and it's almost actually due to be revamped and replanned. It's already, almost been 10 years since the last time they, they reissued it, and my hope, as it was the last time, is that they would increase the enforcement to allow us as regional authorities and municipalities to have better leverage on what we are doing with our waste and our recycling. In regards to Oak Ridge, who formerly was known as Winter's Brothers, they do have a rail line out of Danbury. They do not ship municipal solid waste out of the city of Danbury. They ship construction demo. And if they have told you they shipped municipal solid waste out of Danbury, I will need to follow up with that, because, one, it is not in our agreement, two, it is not regulated by state, by the state of Connecticut, by Connecticut DEP. If you want to rail municipal solid waste, it must be bailed. And in my audits at the transfer station, I have only witnessed that it's construction and demo, that they're railing out, and they are sending it to landfill. The Husatonic Resources Recovery Authority sends our municipal solid waste to Bridgeport, to the waste-to-energy plant there. Our contract, current contract began July 1st of 2019, and will run until June 30th of 2029. Our current municipal solid waste rate for municipalities is $88.21. That increases $1.56 every year for the remaining of the contract. And our recycling rate is $10 per ton for municipal collection at local drop-off centers. So as a municipal transfer station in the town of Roxbury, any material that your residents would drop off as, as a drop-off material would be rated at $10 a ton. Private haulers who collect at the curb pay a different rate, and they pay a rate that's calculated by the ACR, which is the average commodity revenue, and that current rate is $94 a ton. That will be changing as we move forward with a new glass program, where we're separating glass out in the HRA region, and as well as when, as market conditions improve, the ACR changes, and therefore the tip fee decreases. But that doesn't affect the municipality in the rates that you pay directly for disposal. You would always stay at the $10 a ton until the year 2029. We actually have a very attractive fee schedule for our municipalities, where you have an opt-out provision that's calculated on the subject contract year, the preceding contract year multiplied by the CPI. We do not. I know Barbara mentioned the other opt-out, given the, the rates are not under the current cost of living. If for some reason they deny you that there is still an opt-out provision within your contract, it's calculated, I believe it's Appendix E, and I wish I had more time today to read the contract, Barbara, I'm sorry I didn't, but I did catch that. And I, you'd have to actually see what your current contract rate is for the town of Roxbury. I would consider it probably small, based on your population. And so you actually have some options. You just have to weigh the cost of that option, and waiting until 2027 to join HRA would likely, unfortunately, due to the other municipalities and their desire to opt out of Mira, or, or maybe they're not even part of a Resource Recovery Authority, but they need the leverage of being a part of a Resource Recovery Authority, they may be looking to join as well. So we do not have a provision within our contract that would financially hurt a municipality. Basically, you join in good faith. We agree to work together. We provide services to the municipalities from hauler registration, enforcement, public education, and negotiating contracts beyond municipal solid waste and recyclables. We also work with electronic waste vendors, our hazardous waste vendors, et cetera. And if a municipality is not happy at any point during the contract, it doesn't, there's no financial obligation, shockingly. We can't, towns can't commit to a put-or-pay. We don't have control, we don't have flow control. That was abolished in the late 1990s in a federal lawsuit, so that's not going to happen. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Yeah, Jen, it's Russ. You're right. They just shipped the construction debris out. I don't know what they do. I know they process a lot of garbage. I'm just doing a cleanup on the site. They process it all there. I thought it was going out on cars too, but it probably goes elsewhere, just to make, make your point and make it, make it right. So thank you.
Jennifer, Jim Conway, I'd like to ask one question. You say HRA ships to Bridgeport. Bridgeport's a burn plant, to energy, trash to energy. What type of energy are they producing? Oh, she's muted.
Oh, you're muted.
It's all right.
Julie, you can unmute her.
Thank you. Sorry. Julie has a lot of control. Oh, actually, I did not mute you.
Oh, yeah, that's funny.
I am not liking these changes on this.
Um, so I'm back. So I'm sorry, can you just repeat your question? Because as you were talking, I was trying to figure out how I would unmute. So what type of energy you're asking?
Right. In Bridgeport, it's a burn plant.
Yes, it's a burn plant.
And to energy, what type of energy are they producing?
Well, they, it's a, it's a basically a steam plant, and the power that is created is then pumped back into the UI, into the grid.
Okay.
It powers homes in the Bridgeport area. At one point, when we were renegotiating our contract that ended in 2019, one idea was to find a way to have a buyback program for our municipalities, but that fell through, and then we had the contract with Oak Ridge.
So it goes to electricity?
Yes, it goes back into the UI.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And you know, for years, I was led to believe that, you know, CRA was really the only trash-to-energy plant in the Northeast, and come to find out, you know, there are four, but it is the biggest one. It's the largest. So going to Bridgeport, if, like you said, if HRA has concerns about becoming too big with too many towns, I don't know, like, the size of that plant versus what CRA and now Mira has. I mean, is that?
The plant can handle our capacity. The plant isn't even, I don't believe the plant is at capacity currently in regards to agreements, and the concern for the HRA is not that having too many municipalities would reach that capacity. It's more about having better control and management as a group, and not being too big for our bridges, and working together collaboratively is, is the goal.
So how many towns are in HRA right now?
Currently 12.
12. And those towns all make up the board?
Yes, so the chief elected officials, the mayors, and the first selectmen of those 12 municipalities. Would you like me to name them, or?
No, that's okay. I know, you know, there's Bridgewater, and then Danbury, and that whole section of towns.
Yeah, basically Kent down to Ridgefield, Reading, and Weston.
Okay. So, um, I don't know, you know, what the selectmen, what do you think about this, in pursuing this? There's a lot of unknowns staying with Mira. And I, I think that I would like to, number one, I would like to contact Matt Knickerbocker. I know him from Bethel. He's the chairman of the HRA board. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then, and also the board, and I've already contacted the head of the board at Mira, Don Stein from Barkhamsted. And I've also spoken to Tom Kirk, who is the CEO of Mira. So I would like to at least pursue our options and see what else we can do. Like I said, there's just so many unknowns with staying where we are, and the costs that are going to be escalated, because someone let me know that the Lieutenant Governor is trying to push for getting some funding to help with Mira, but it is not, it is not going anywhere.
Barbara, is Mira currently up and running? Are they back burning? Are they still hauling it out? Oh, they're burning?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. And have our fees gone up to, they haven't gone to 145 yet, have they?
No, 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 no. That's, I mean, that's years down the road. We're at, what did I budget? 93?
91.
I think it's 93.
Yeah.
So.
I think, I think for me, it's how much pain is it to break the contract? Because if it's a large fee, or.
No, there's no fee.
Legal, legal fight.
Right. Okay.
And then what does HRA charge? What would we be paying?
You don't charge, we don't charge anything. You don't pay the HRA. There's no membership fee, and you don't pay us. There's, there's no cost to the town to be a part of the authority. What, how we are reimbursed, or how we, our revenue comes from the tonnage of the municipal solid waste coming out of each of our member towns.
Right. So what's that price?
We receive $2 on the ton for municipal solid waste, and $5 on the ton for recyclables. We also understand that there's no flow control. You have no control of sending the material, except what is collected at your local transfer station. So whatever's collected at your transfer station, you'd be obligated to send to Oak Ridge. We would get $2 on the ton for MSW and $5 on recyclables. We would hope that any private haulers who utilize their business in the town would also utilize the transfer station, and the fees are attractive enough that I think that they would. But there's, the only out-of-pocket would be whatever you're collecting at your transfer station, which can also be recouped by member or user fees from your residents.
Which is called the taxes that they pay.
Well, it depends. I mean, all transfer stations work that way. Some municipalities, it's a, you pay as you throw. So if you bring a bag of garbage, you pay for that bag of garbage, and the taxes don't pay for it. And some towns, like the town of Newtown, I don't know how Roxbury works, but I know the town of Newtown, you pay $100 to use a transfer station, and you bring as much garbage as you want. So every town has a different formula for which they collect, and how they financially manage their solid waste. That's something we could also work with you on, and how to make it sustainable financially for the municipality and for the residents.
So if we hauled, our hauler would take it to Danbury? Just Danbury?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you have an option of Danbury, Newtown. Obviously, you wouldn't go to Ridgefield. We have three municipal transfer stations, HRA transfer stations.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry. I thought being outside was going to be the quietest place outside the house. There's meetings, there's kids, there's, so I'm sorry. I don't know if you can hear what's going on, so I apologize.
No. Don't worry about it. Okay. I certainly appreciate you being here. I think there's some food for thought, and what I, I just need to hear from my own selectmen is, just for me to be able to pursue those two, two boards and see.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I, I agree. It's time, just with the understanding of what Mira's going through, the uncertainties, and I think it's a smart, prudent thing to do, is to look elsewhere. Currently, it's working for us. I don't know if Mira's going to dig themselves out in the future and grow, but, you know, I'd always like to give everybody a chance to straighten things out.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it's going to be a couple of years. It would take us, if we were staying there, to figure out what we should be doing. I mean, Mira, I think, is going to last, but their way, their operations are going to change significantly, where they have to, like I said, build these train platforms and haul it all out to other states. And who knows? Who knows how long? You know, you're looking at the environment, there's a lot of different issues. I know Russ, yeah, we have, in Hartford, our covered landfill in Hartford is nice, but I don't. But I, I don't see where Connecticut would say, sure, bring your trash here and we'll bury it.
No, I, I support burning, burning and trash energy. I can't support burying landfill trash, you know? I don't think that's the right way to go.
I just want to point out that the state of Connecticut has until August 31st to approach MIRA and any financial support. So that's, that's a date to kind of look forward to, to see where the state moves.
Right.
Or don't support the future of MIRA. It is an important plant for the state of Connecticut. It helps us maintain capacity in the state. Without it, you're right, it will have to be shipped out of state. There are liability concerns that municipalities should have regarding sending their solid waste to landfill. And happy to share that at another time with you. I, I did a little bit of that research before we ended our last contract and started the new contract with Oak Ridge.
Yeah, because if somebody, any of, any of the group has something that they shouldn't be sending out, and it gets buried, and that probably, they come back to everybody's trash, and everybody gets a piece of a lawsuit or something. So I don't know, but that could be part of it. What was I going to say? Okay, so the other thing that MIRA switched to was single stream. What does HRA do?
So, well, it's not that we do, it's that it's what our private haulers, we're almost nearly 100% private subscription. So the haulers pretty much have adopted single stream as a way of collecting. It is cheaper for them, it's more efficient, it's less workers' comp and liability. Our opinion of single stream is that it was probably the worst thing we could have ever done, done for the state of Connecticut. It's one of the reasons why-
Here, here.
It's horrible. It's one of the reasons-
It is.
I have begun the process of source separating glass from single stream in our region. I had to jump through hoops with Connecticut DEP and legislation to have the ability to do so because state is a mandated recyclable. These are the things that we need to change in the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut says you have to recycle your glass, yet glass is never recycled. In Connecticut, the markets are not there. We're shipping our glass nearly 500 miles out of the state as alternate daily cover, going to landfills. And where I would like to see, we have a, a glass processor, strategic material out of South Windsor, Connecticut. They make bottle-to-bottle products. They collect nearly all of the material that comes out of the bottle bill. It's pure, pure glass. So as we move forward into the future of how to manage recyclables, we need to look more towards away from single stream and more towards source separation of material where there's a higher quality, it's more sustainable, and it has a beneficial use besides landfill. So, and I'm, I'm more than happy to talk to you more about that in the future. But to go back to your question, yeah, single stream is happening, but it's not necessarily supported by us as a philosophy.
So everybody is doing single stream, so we would be an anomaly where we don't, you know, we're just small, a small transfer station that's just been separated. And when they went to single stream, it was just going to be some of the changes we were going to have to make, and we're not willing to put the money into that. But it was also, I couldn't see, when I did go and visit MIRA, seeing all the dirty and wet cardboard and stuff that was all thrown in, I, I just can't understand why they can't be selling that to anybody. So-
It definitely degrades the value, single stream. And if you are still source separating material at your local transfer station, you will get a higher value for it. So those are, those are certain things that we can work out with municipality on, on the return of how that will work.
So do any of these 12 towns have that pay to throw, or throw to, whatever it's called?
Pay as you throw, or it, or some call it smart, saving money and reducing trash. So a majority of them charge their residents either by the bag or by the weight. So they have a scale. And so as the resident comes in, it either gets weighed, or the bags are counted, and they're charged that way. And like Newtown, it, it's a one-fee, you throw away as much as you want, which I, I actually don't support because it doesn't incentivize our residents to reduce their solid waste and recycle more. But it's, it's really up to the municipality. There are also towns that don't accept municipal solid waste at their transfer station and just recycling. The town of Bridgewater doesn't take municipal solid waste, but they do take recyclables, and they take special waste, like tires, propane tanks, motor oil, et cetera.
Right. They have all subscriptions, and people have to leave their stuff on the corner and pay someone to come pick it up.
Right. We also have organics programs at five of our municipal drop-off locations where residents can bring their food scraps, and that's transported to either a composter or an anaerobic digester in the state to also help reduce the cost of solid waste. And the cost to dispose of organics is half the cost of disposing of municipal solid waste for the resident. And there's an incentive for them.
Okay.
Barbara, it's Margaret. Could I make a, a comment in support?
Certainly.
Hello, Jennifer. I'm in connection with Rivers Alliance and a couple of other groups. I have, you know, looked at legislation and been to conferences with waste people. And I completely agree that the single stream is horrible. There is a market for high-quality glass if we could separate it out. At least, my understanding is there is, and I'm sure it would grow. And I also heard a, a waste manager in North Bradford who was begging people, please don't put your glass, you know, if we could separate it out for a good market, fine. But he said, when we put it in with the other recyclables, it just turns to glass dust, and his workers are breathing it, and he's having to stop the machines and clean it out. So I just wanted to say how glad I am to hear the kinds of changes that you'll be working on making. And I look forward to your success with that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Good. Jim or Russ, you have anything else you want to ask or add?
No, I'm good.
Good. Russ? We always lose Russ. Jennifer, thank you for joining us, and I will be in touch with you. You know, tomorrow I'll give you a call, and I will, I will contact these two boards.
Okay, you're welcome. Have a great night, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You too.
All right. Um, all right, what's next? Botsford Hill Culvert. So the, just to, just to review about the local bridge program with this, we had hired Leonard Engineering a couple of years ago. We did not get the, the grant with the local bridge program because they came back, the DEP said the culvert actually was not in dire straits. I forget the word that they used, severe. And so we were, we, we couldn't get the, the grant. Well, over the next two years, it has gone into severe. And I did contact Leonard Engineering like you had asked me to, and they are going to get this updated so I can get it back in. And, and that's in the works. And they know that they have to have something for me in July because that's when the next round they're going to start looking at for the local bridge program. And so just while I'm talking about the local bridge, I mean, I, I know it's Botsford Hill Culvert, but I just wanted to touch base about Cardinal Engineering because you had given me the okay for them to go out and look at the six federal bridges. And I had a nice talk with them, and they actually dropped it from 2,000 a bridge to 1,500. So I would like to be able to sign that contract with them tomorrow, if you still agree with that.
Six federal bridges, so-
It's dwellers, minor. It's South Street, which is near-
Yeah, I know.
Black Swamp.
Yep.
River Road. That one. Judge Bridge over the Shapog, and then Judge Bridge Road over Lenavig Brook.
How do they get, how do they get titled a federal bridge?
It's bridges that are, well, these are larger than 20 feet. So anyway, you, you asked me to tell them to go ahead with it, and now they lowered their price. So I just want to, if I can just get a motion that I can sign this so that they can start, that would be good. And a part of this deal is, it's, it's a professional consulting service to review these town bridges and assist them, the town, to develop the capital improvement program to make improvements. These are all assessments. And again, it'll be in a book with the inspections, the verifications, et cetera, and recommendations on the repairs that they're going to need in the future.
I make a motion that you sign the contract with Cardinal?
Good.
These bridges weren't addressed the first time they did the assessments?
No.
They just did our small culverts and stuff?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I'll second it. I'll second Russ's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the rain garden. Russ, you were involved with that. You want to report on that?
Uh, I met, I forgot her name.
Yeah.
Cynthia Benowitz.
Yes, I met her. She wanted to put it next to the senior garden, but that's not the place for it because there's no runoff there on her. I, I don't think people understand what a rain garden does. So I was going to bring her up to the transfer station, but she didn't really like that idea because, I guess, because of the transfer station. And nobody would really see it up there, even though everybody goes up there. It would be back behind the cardboard box. So we went to Booth Free School, found a perfect spot where all the roof water is coming out. Probably would help the school with some of the drainage problems that they have back there. And, and she took it from there.
This is a grant that we're getting, and so I'm glad that, I, I thank you for going out. I didn't think that at the transfer station it was going to be behind the cardboard box. I thought it was going to be-
It's on the side, between the landfill and the cardboard box.
And a lot of people would have seen it, but I think that this is great because they do have water issues at Booth. So she's getting in touch with me, and, you know, when she's ready to, to get going. And I thank you, I just wanted to report that the grant is taking care of all of that. So that'll be a nice thing. I've seen them, they're, they're really, really nice. So we're going to have to advertise it also. Okay, COVID updates. I just wanted to bring you all up to date. As far as cases in Roxbury, we're holding steady with, we, you know, have had eight confirmed cases since the beginning. We have had one documented confirmed death, unfortunately. And, you know, people are, are doing what they're supposed to be doing predominantly. The, the other day, the governor came out with Phase 3, which was, he was supposed to come out with a plan for Phase 3, which involved more businesses, et cetera, including the senior centers. And so he's put that on hold. So the senior center is going to remain closed. What they are doing in Bridgewater is they're, they are holding some events for the seniors outside. And I just learned that yesterday because on Friday, they sent, they sent a letter to everybody, all their seniors, and said, we are closed, we are closed, and we're going to continue to stay closed, but we, we'll do some things outside. So today, I sent an email to Bernie Mean, who's our emergency management director, as well as Donna Culbert. And I said, I want your feedback for, you know, doing something like that in Roxbury. Bernie's adamantly opposed to it, and I haven't heard from Donna because I just emailed today. The, there are some groups that are going out, you know, and sitting out at the pavilion. And I just, you know, I've told them that they can go, but they are not sanctioned by the town, that I cannot do that at this point. So we have some sports programs taking place. They're following the guidelines. We have a little league in the back. We're going to probably have a karate class that's going to be up at the, up at the pavilion also. The town hall had their soft opening today. It's limited access by the outside. It's by appointment only. We have signs on both doors that will remain locked. People are going to, I am getting, I have an email blast ready to go out. But, you know, we're going to continue to serve people by, you know, serve the public by phone and email predominantly, and phone call, you know, phone calls. The tax bills are out. There was, you know, a plea to please pay online or by mail. The Dropbox is being used. It's emptied three, four times a day. And what else? So the residents can call a specific department, and that person can determine if they can help them remotely, use the Dropbox, go outside and meet them, or make an appointment for them to come in. We do have some, you know, shields and sanitizing, et cetera, around. The church is going to start coming back in here on Sunday, but we do have the, the gentleman that cleans the town hall come in whenever we are open, the Tuesday, Thursday. I'm sorry, he's going to come in, he cleans on Monday, so that'll take care after the church. And he's going to come in every day and do a little bit with the bathrooms, et cetera, on the days that we're open. So the playground is open. It is being cleaned regularly, as are the bathrooms. The basketball court is still closed. I don't know what I'm going to do with that just yet. And like I said, some people are meeting on their own in the pavilion. We have stressed social distancing. I can't really babysit everybody. The Complis and the Public Works are continuing. They never stopped working. The schools are, they've got a plan for a full reopen in the fall. I don't know how they're going to do that, these poor kids, they gotta wear masks all day. But that's up to the superintendent to deal with that. So that's where we are right now, as far as updates for Roxbury. We have had some complaints about, you know, people in the market or the stores not wearing masks. And Bernie, who we said was going to be our enforcement person, which we had to name, the state said we had to have somebody. He has, has and is still dealing with some of that, and the food places, the health department is. So that doesn't fall to me, thank God. So the 2020 census, the state average, I mean, the, the percentage of the state, it's in the 60s. I can't remember if it's 66% of the people have responded in the state. Roxbury's hanging at about 65%. And we really do need to get more people to respond to that. I'm, I've got to put it in my email blast again, and all they got to do is click here and go, and it's, you know, not a whole lot.
Barbara, can I ask one question on COVID?
Yes.
Last, last month, we discussed someone cleaning the bathroom with a fogger on a daily basis.
Yep.
And is that's happening now, or are we going to wait for that soccer camp?
No, actually, they're going up there and cleaning it. We did get that. We also got all the disinfectant, so that they're doing the playground and the bathrooms.
And who does that? Our cleaning service, or did we hire?
Yep. We, we hired Sarah Forman to just take care of that.
So she has started?
She started.
Yes, okay.
She's not here this week. So, so I think we were locking the bathrooms because we also have a Port John up there.
Right, right.
So, um, so far, it's working, it, it was working out. That's it. 2020 census, Fire Marshal's report, I did, I did not get her report, but I do have the resident troopers. And I know it says May, but it's, it should have been June also on the agenda. And they had 260 calls for service, include investigations, motor vehicle stops, patrol checks, burglar- Include investigations, motor vehicle stops, patrol checks, burglar alarms, et cetera, medical assists. They had, um, 13 criminal, non-criminal investigations, four accidents, four infractions, one warning, motor vehicle offenses and like I said, 260 calls for service. I said, uh, they are trying to make an effort to do enforcement in high complaint areas. Just got another complaint about Squire Road and the traffic that is just screaming on that road. And then I bumped into somebody this morning and they said, you gotta put a yellow line down it. It's really not one of our wider roads. And, uh, I don't think a yellow line is, is gonna help any people stay in their lane because it's, I don't think the road is wide enough quite honestly. So I've got a request for speed limit signs on Judd's Bridge Road. I mean, it's a daily thing, people are saying that the traffic and the motorcycles and the speed, it's all about speed. So we do, we have ordered a new speed sign. We have, um, it's on a trailer so that they can take it, or the police can take it around and put it in different spots. We are gonna be able to get reimbursed for that because we are saying it is COVID related with all the extra people that are in town. And, um, so that's a good thing. Um, so we are waiting the delivery of that. They have, we, we've increased the patrols on the weekends due to the influx of people using the preserves and the parks and that they are taking COVID-19 precautions in all of their calls. So that's that report. I, um, one thing I was gonna, I just, just to add real quick was the pensions. I wanted to, you know, um, have a meeting with someone who is looking to give us another opinion about how our pensions are handled. You two are, um, what do you call it? What do you, you are trustees.
Trustees, yeah.
Right. And in the past, I have also included John Hopkins, Bill Culbert, when we were talking with Union Savings Bank. And I would like to set that up again, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else?
Nope, it's starting to rain.
It is. Okay. All right, um, that's it then, I need a motion to adjourn?
One, one more, uh, trees, trees. Um, what, uh, the trees over by the tennis court, were they dead?
They had, uh, they had issues near the bases of them. Um, EverSource is the one that came and said they wanted to take them down because they were also putting in much higher telephone poles, the wires were gonna run through them.
Right.
They took me over there, I said, I, I don't think that these things really need to come down, you can trim them out. And they said, no, we're taking them down. So the two on the end, I talked them into keeping, but the three in the middle, they did take. And they are coming back to get all that wood. Um, if you could see, they're, they're kinda hollow, but there were some holes or hollowness towards the bottom of some of those, on the inside towards the tennis court.
Mm-hmm.
I know, it looks different. And then, you know, going up 317, um, you know, across from like where Brian Winthrop's house is, they just left all these totem poles up there, it's, looks ridiculous. And so they've, they've cut quite a number of trees, but we're having to cut a lot ourselves with, um, the ash and, uh, just trying to keep up with it. And, you know, before the state went into lockdown, we were looking to try and get some money from the state to help with it because the ash problem is, is serious throughout the whole state.
Is there, you think there's any money out there for the ash or the trees?
We're, um, at the different groups like C C M and COS, we're trying to get the state help with that, but who knows? I mean, they don't have any.
Ton of trees to come down, that's for sure.
Yeah, quite a bit. Yeah, I was sorry to see those go, but it's done. All right, you, Russ, you made a motion to adjourn?
I did.
Okay. Do you want to second that, second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you Julie, Kim, I'm sorry it couldn't get undone with your, with your microphone. Unmuted, I mean. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Night.